The April 15th meeting of the Stillwater Planning Commission will now come to order. It will be the process this evening to call for items on the agenda. The commission will hear briefly from staff first, then the applicant and/or their representative, then open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or in opposition to the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. Before closing the public hearing, both staff, the applicant and/or their representative will be provided an opportunity to respond, to provide additional information, and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will then be closed, and we will hear closing remarks and alternatives from staff. With that, the first item on the agenda this evening is a map amendment. It is map amendment MA 25-02.
Staff is recommending that no action be taken on this item due to a possible notification issue.
Okay. We'll move then to the second item on the agenda, and that's map amendment MA 25-03, and we will hear from staff first.
All right. Thank you, Planning Commission. I'm Josh Brown. I'm the development coordinator with City of Stillwater. As you stated, this is a map amendment. This is at 1017 and 1023 South Husband Street. Their request is to rezone from two-family residential to commercial business. Here's an area map showing the subject property highlighted in kind of the pink rectangle. This is at the northeast corner of South Husband Street and East 11th Avenue. Here's an aerial view showing Stone Cloud Brewery and Empire Slice Pizza located about a block to the north across 10th Avenue. And Stillwater Public Library is located to the southwest along 12th Avenue. Here's a couple of street views. The one in the upper left-hand corner is the one, there's the property on 12th, or addressed off of 12th, sorry, or addressed off of Husband. And the lower right-hand corner is the property addressed off of 11th Avenue. Here's a zoning map. The subject property is surrounded on three sides by the two-family residential zoning, the north, the west, and the south. Commercial business is located directly to the east, and it continues to the south, to the north, and then, not really pictured here, but on toward the, to the west. This is the future land use map, which was adopted with our current comprehensive plan, and it's used to predict desired future uses. The comprehensive plan in this case calls for commercial uses at this site. So the applicant and his engineer are here. If you have any questions for them, do you have any questions for staff?
I don't see any questions for staff. Thank you. So at this time, we'd ask for the applicant or their representative to come forward.
Corey Williams, 621 South Husband. And I'm the applicant, and I'm the developer of the project. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. You're probably wondering why I've done a map amendment for commercial in what is primarily a residential area. And mainly, it has to do with our code. In order to do what we want to do, there is not a section of the code that currently fits the redevelopment project. And so, to let you know what we want to do, is I want to do 13 single-family residences. If you've ever seen the Lark in west of downtown Edmund, it's a relatively new development, kind of a pocket community. So if you Google "pocket communities," you'll get Black Apple over in Fayetteville-Bittenville area, and you'll get a whole bunch of different things. But these are highly walkable, kind of zero-lot line, community-oriented amenities, like little pocket parks and things like that, in them. And we don't have a section of the code for that. It just doesn't fit anywhere. And the normal place to put it would be in a PUD. But we can't do a PUD for a piece of land this small. And so, here we are. And I don't know, I don't, I don't think we turned in any kind of conceptual drawings beyond the site plan. I don't know. Did, you tell me. Okay. Well, with your permission, I'll approach, and I can kind of hand you the iterations. And I'm not going to promise that it's 100 percent how it's going to come out, but it's going to look really close to this.
Yep.
Say again?
Our clerk can take them.
I've been doing this since, well, I bought my first building at 712 South Main in 2008-ish. And I bought it because it had this huge attic space on the second floor that was completely unutilized. And my goal was to add bedrooms to downtown Stillwater. Because I've seen people before me put a lot of money into dressing the place up and creating new businesses down here, and different downtown programs, kind of centered around making downtown a place to be. But we, but every time, like, a big-box retailer opened up, or a new strip mall opened up, it pulled all of the traffic out, and downtown kind of languished. And it seemed like we were on a little bit of a rinse-and-repeating cycle. And I thought, humans are funny. Humans want to be where humans are. And so, if I can move bedrooms down here, and actually move people into those bedrooms to create a sense of vibrancy, then people will want to come down here and be at Aspen and Louis' and Zanotti's and the rest of them. Those are kind of the pioneers that helped allow us to be able to do it. But, so I've been very focused on getting bedrooms in downtown Stillwater for a long time. In this immediate vicinity, I've bought nearly a dozen homes and remodeled them, and spent a lot of money doing so, in what was otherwise a little bit of a risky area to make that investment. You know, the house directly catty-corner from this property, sitting at the southwest corner of 11th and Husband, was legitimately a meth house. And it was not pretty. And now, it is a really pretty kind of urban farmhouse duplex with great tenants. And we've done that, kind of spotted, all the way around the neighborhood. These structures, you saw the pictures, I will tell you, the picture does not do it justice for the condition that it is in. And I've only owned it a few months, so not my fault. But that one on the corner, I'm pretty sure if we all went and gave it a decent push, it would come down on its own. The termites have been holding hands too long, and they're tired. So I'm glad to take any questions, kind of what it is that we're trying to do. I think Stephen Goos is probably better situated to speak to why we have to have the map amendment, as he's a little bit more in the weeds on our current code.
Any questions of commissioners?
So you have to zone it as commercial to create a residential area?
Ironic, isn't it?
Okay. I just, I thought I understood that.
It's true. We don't have a section of code currently, and I think that there's been consultants brought in, and I think that the code is kind of being rewritten and adopted. But currently, as it sits, there is not an iteration in the code that allows for what we're trying to do. Besides commercial, sorry.
So what you're saying is perhaps we, there needs to be a revision to the code that can be adopted into the comp plan to allow for developments, if you want to use that word, such as this?
Oh, I'd love to see that. Absolutely. Because what you're doing is you're creating a walkable community, you're increasing the density without having to increase the density via, you know, kind of a multifamily, stack them on top of each other situation. And so, yeah, I mean, I would love to see something like that in the code. I think as utility rates continue to increase, I think you might see housing get smaller, and the ability of the code to adopt as such would be great.
Being that there is no specific part of our code for it, what led you to land on commercial business?
Actually, that was Mr. Goos' direction. He said this is the part of the code that will, that you'll actually be able to build this and do this in. It kind of allows, it's kind of the portion of the code that seems right now to be the catch-all, where if it doesn't fit into one of these other boxes, it fits here. And so, it was actually his direction that we chose that. And you can probably see from the pictures that we moved most of the parking to the alley. So the alley will be improved. And then there's, I think, diagonal parking, designed for diagonal parking, running down 11th, and then parallel, inset parallel parking, running along Husband, to help free up that And if you haven't had the opportunity to walk the Lark in West Edmund, given the positions you hold, I have to imagine that you're interested in city development. It's pretty cool. And they have two more under construction right now. One called the Ember, that is a little bit bigger houses, but still very walkable with their own little parkettes and whatnot scattered throughout. And mainly, it's just to help neighbors kind of engage neighbors. There'll be large porches attached. You can kind of see that from the pictures. And then, community fireplace, and a plunge pool, and things like that, to just kind of help engage interaction. Hopefully, these individuals are walking to all of our downtown businesses, and 34 Entertainment, and things like that.
Any questions, any other questions for the applicant? I do have a question for Mr. Goos, if you wouldn't mind. Go ahead.
Stephen Goos, Goos &amp; Associates, 113 East 8th Avenue.
So I think in looking through this, the lot sizes that we're talking about, it's just under a half acre is what we're looking at. What is the, so that won't qualify for a PUD?
Right, which requires one acre greater.
One acre, okay. And then, any, any other things that led you towards looking and applying for the CB zoning?
Really, if you see on that last page of Josh's packet, it has the comparison of the zoning districts. And it's really that top part, no setbacks, all of that. We're still providing parking within the development as it's proposed for the residential units. But it's really that, that no, no setbacks. And then, the uses, there's a lot more uses in there, and it doesn't say "single family" specifically, but the way things are written right now, the unit or condo ownership really gets us close to where we need to be with regard to ownership of it.
So, I mean, it does list condominium ownership?
Yeah.
Under CB?
Right. It's the only place it's allowed in this city. I think we had this discussion a few weeks ago on another site that wanted to do condos, so. And to the questions earlier about the comprehensive plan and the code updates, Ms. Phillips and I sit on the Citizens Advisory Committee for that process, and we've started seeing some of the chapters come out, and discussions about trying to do overlay districts as opposed to specific zoning districts where people can come in and do some more unique, non-standard zoning things to allow, again, this flexibility and use of our internal infill sites.
And then, I think the last thing, which either you or Mr. Williams could either one answer, and that would be under the commercial business, so when it's abetting the RT zoning that's adjacent, there are some requirements for buffers? And I'm just assuming that it would be the intent to continue to follow those buffers that are required?
As well as we could, or if there's some modifications have to be made as the plan gets developed.
Okay.
We'd either come back through you all, or Board of Adjustment, to address some of those as they come up.
There's just some landscaping buffers?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, he's going to want those for security purposes, too, so.
I think so. That was all, that was all I had.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So at this time, I'd open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this item, to please come forward. And I'm going to ask for in favor first, and if there's nobody in favor, then I'll ask for anyone opposed, and if there's a question, we'll catch that as well. So, do I see? Well, so, I can only run the meeting and the process that's set for us, so the way that we have operated in the past is we have allowed questions to come in during opposition So, again, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this item, to please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition of the item. If there's no one that's directly opposed but has a question they would like to ask, then ma'am, you could, you could come forward if you have a question you would like to ask. And I'll just ask for you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Sharon Hoker.
And your address?
My address is 3220 West Old Forest.
Okay. Could you get to the microphone?
Yes. 3220 West Old Forest.
Thank you.
I own a piece of property near this, this is reasonably up here. How many units did he say?
13.
13 units on two lots? How many stor-, six lots?
Ma'am, ma'am, and if you, Mr. Williams will answer, and you don't have to answer these here, that's okay.
Okay. Where are the six lots in? Because I only see two lots marked on here.
So, the way that the lots are broken up, and I may, I may get staff to help me, or maybe Mr. Goos can help at the end, so.
Is it, so is it this and this?
I'll tell you what, yes, I'll tell you what, ma'am, the person for us to handle this in an orderly fashion is, you can ask the questions. If we can't answer them directly, I'll, we'll have Mr. Goos, or Mr. Williams come up afterwards, after we close the public hearing and address that, so, or before we close, so. So your questions are the lots, how the lots are laid out?
How many?
Number and how many? And you wanted to get a clarification on the number of units proposed? Other questions that you have? A number of stories? That was also a question you had?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have other, so it said, what we've seen, and, well, I'll let the applicant answer the questions.
Okay. If you could just point it out to me, I'd probably answer it.
I'm sorry?
If you would just point it out to me, I'd probably answer it.
This might be beneficial.
Yeah, she can take a look at.
Sure.
That's the conceptual idea.
So what, is it this lot and this?
No. It's these, these are just, these are, we're looking at the notice that was sent out for the public hearing. These are parcels. They don't actually reflect the actual lots. This was platted with 25-foot-wide lots. So there are six 25-foot-wide lots in here.
Okay. So these are not standard lots? I know they're not. 25 feet, so this is.
They're standard for downtown.
They're, they're, they're standard for that area of town, when that area of town was platted.
Right, I understand. But they're not standard for residential.
They're, they're, they're standard for that area.
So this is what, you want to put all of this in this space?
I do.
50 feet by what?
It's not 50 feet.
Okay. 100 feet by what?
140.
140. And you want to put 13 units in there.
That's drawn to scale. I didn't make it up.
Let's talk to the vice president a little bit more, or politics is part of the public hearing.
Your property is located right here.
I know it is. I know it is, I'm just trying to.
I was just trying to help.
Yeah, no, it's fine, I understand now, but those are going to be tiny little places, isn't it?
1300 square, sorry.
Yeah, ma'am.
1300 square feet to about 900 square feet, give or take.
Per unit.
Per unit.
Okay.
And there how many stories? And this is not going to encroach upon the street on the, on Husband?
So, ma'am, ma'am, we really need to not have the one-on-one conversation during the public hearing portion of the meeting. I'm sorry, but I need to abide by our rules.
So the question is, is this going to impede on the street on Husband where he's putting the parking at all?
Okay, so that's the, another question, okay.
Or is that just going with what is regularly allowed there?
Okay.
I think that probably answers all my questions.
Okay, all right. Thank you, ma'am. So I'll just wait just a moment, so I'll ask if there's, ma'am, you may go back. I'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience who would like to ask a question. You want to state your name and address for the record, please? Yes.
Janet Rogers, 1006 South Husband. I just have a question. I have been told in the past that the entry onto a property is not allowed from an alleyway. And that's just, that's my question.
That's your question? Okay.
Yeah.
If that's allowed. All right, thank you. All right, I'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience this evening that would like to approach during the public hearing to ask or raise a question? Okay, seeing none, we would allow the applicant and your representative to come forward and answer the questions that have been asked.
Okay. With regard to the parking, as it's designed, we're going to do parallel inset on Husband, so it will not narrow the trafficway at all. During a pre-development meeting, we met with Public Safety, and they had concerns about making sure that the new boom truck would be able to spread its outriggers. And so, I think recently, no parking signs went up on that east side of Husband to help alleviate some traffic flow concerns in the area. We're hopeful to remove those by insetting the parking into the existing right-of-way along Husband. But not in a diagonal fashion, in a parallel fashion. Diagonal fashion, running along 11th Avenue, parallel to the project.
Okay, and so the number of lots that are there is six, is that correct?
I think it's my understanding right.
Yeah, Mr. Goos, if you would.
Yeah, I believe it's six lots, and like stated previously, they were platted as 25-foot wide by 140 feet deep. And that original plat, and I want to say that's a 19, or 1889 pre-statehood plat, so. And then, with regard to the question about access off the alleys, anything we've done, and I haven't seen in the code where access off the alleys is prohibited, it's actually, at least in the Form-based code, in some of those areas encouraged to utilize those alleys. And there's been quite a bit of redevelopment in west of this area, on the other side of Duck, on both sides of 9th, where recent projects have actually reconstructed alleys to take access off of them for the cars, and gets rid of all the driveways on the main streets, and allows for safer traffic flow and parking and things like that.
Okay. And then, I think the number of units proposed?
I think Mr. Williams said there's 13.
Right, okay. And he answered the number of stories, two?
Yeah, two stories.
Okay.
And no, none of this is proposed, none of the proposed structures will cross the property lines into the right-of-way on 11th or on Husband. And that goes back to the setbacks, and the CB district allow for zero setbacks, so. And these are 100-foot right-of-ways, so in a more, if we were going to plat a small lot, single-family subdivision today, it would have either 50 or 60-foot-wide right-of-ways and 50-by-100-foot lots.
I think that was, I think that was it.
All right, thank you.
Ma'am, did you have an additional question?
When you're saying that in commercial business, there's no setback?
Could you get in the?
There's no setback? Are you saying that they can build right up to the cars that are parked there?
No, it's not, it's not that, that's what Mr. Goos was talking about, the right-of-way. Do you want to answer that question?
Yeah, so, the property line is where they could build up to, in that street section, so 100-foot right-of-way has a 50-foot half-right-of-way section, half of the street's 13 feet, parking's 18 feet, so that's, now you're making me do math. 31 feet, which leaves 19 feet between the parking and the property line. There's typically a six-foot sidewalk in there.
Okay, so there will be a sidewalk, like normally, is my concern.
Yeah, there will be a sidewalk constructed along both frontages, when it's developed. And that's a whole nother application.
All right. All right, any other questions? I think we've answered everything, so I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for alternatives from staff.
Okay, so I'll actually give findings first. The Land Development Code does allow for rezoning of land via map amendments. CB zoning is located in the vicinity to the east, and the comprehensive plan calls for commercial uses in this area. And now, your alternatives. You can accept the findings and recommend that City Council approve the proposed map amendment as presented, or you can find that the map amendment is not in appropriate use, and recommend the City Council disapprove the map amendment, or you can find that additional information or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation and table the request to a certain date. Staff recommends your first option, which is to accept the findings and recommend City Council approve.
Thank you. Commissioners, any discussion, perhaps a motion?
I think it's a positive project. It fits the area, and it sounds like this is the best zoning for the project, and the comprehensive plan also calls for that zoning, so I would say that we accept the findings, or I would motion that we accept the findings and recommend that City Council approve the proposed map amendment as presented.
Second.
And I'll just echo your thoughts. I think that, given the fact that the size of the property being developed doesn't allow for a PUD, this is the best mechanism that we have in place to move forward with this type of development, so I would, I would incur with those findings.
Sorry, I jumped there a little bit.
Now, you're, that's, that's good. So we have a motion and a second to accept the application, or the map amendment, and recommend approval by the City Council, all in favor, or I'm sorry, we shall now vote. And motion passes 4-0. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. We have a meeting summary for review and possible action, and we have the regular meeting summary from the April 1st meeting. Do I hear any corrections or additions, or perhaps a motion as submitted?
There's one minor.
Okay.
Very minor. I don't even know if we need to change it, but, just a second. About three-quarters of the way down, in Mr. Aaron Ferguson's comments, it says the two lots in the southeast corner, that where located?
Should be where.
Yeah.
Any other notes? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes with the one minor correction?
I move, we approve the minutes with suggested change.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we shall now vote. Motion passes 4-0. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or city attorney for discussion and possible action. The one item that we do have listed is that the next regular meeting is May 6th. Have any other items? All right. All right, okay. Then the last item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We shall now vote. Motion passes 4-0. We're now adjourned.